Alrighty, welcome everyone to our commission work session today is Monday, December first. Commissioner Sharon Bowles, I'm here with Commissioner Gage Forrester, Commissioner Jim Harvey. Our first item is discussion and or action for approval of the minutes for the commission work sessions held on November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
A motion carries, alright. Item two is a discussion regarding congressional district map changes Lauren Schaefer.
So, um, the lieutenant governor's office notified us that we need to make changes where our congressional districts to be in compliance with a fore order that was issued by Judge Gibson on November twenty first. Um, these changes essentially move us from US House one, which is Blake Moore, to predominantly US House two, which is Celeste Malloy. And then the Valley will have portions of US House three, so we will no longer be US House one, we'll only be two and three. Um, yeah.
Two and three?
Yeah.
Who's two, who's three?
Just a part of the Valley.
Yeah, but who's, who's that rep now?
Mike Kennedy.
Okay. Well, it doesn't hurt my feelings, but. How did that?
Who's in Blake doesn't hurt your feelings?
Well, I like Blake a lot.
Well, I, I wouldn't be surprised if they rearrange who is in which district.
Well, I understood, what I read, which you never know is true.
So Blake might become two.
Ogden Valley split a building in half.
Yeah, they did.
Is that true?
Yeah, I saw that map.
Okay.
Is that? Not for us, but it would be weird to live in an apartment building and know that you're.
So part of that would be in three, another part would be in two?
Are, is it condos?
It might be condos.
It's probably one of the John Lewis's condos.
I didn't know that it was living spaces.
Yeah, there's like three of the condo in one and then one of the other. It just splits.
Wow.
Okay, so what do you guys need from?
So, we will have to, right now, we currently would have four precincts that exist in that area of the valley. And we need to split all four of them into two, and in one of them, it'll need to be split into three to be in compliance with these changes. So we have four existing precincts that would become nine precincts.
Holy crap.
And it's not due to having the threshold of voters, but making sure that like that condo is in three and two, so making sure that they split along lines. And I think more, like we can show you the, on the second, third, and fourth pages, it shows you where those splits are. The darker color is US House three and the lighter color is US House two. And so it shows you where those weird splits will become.
So what happens if, so we'll do this again if the appeal goes through and it's, well, it's been appealed, but.
We have to do this, so right now, we're working with Cameron and GIS and UGRC to get these changes implemented. Because we have to have, be in compliance with this court order by January second, because we start declaration of candidacy. And so we'd have to know what districts to put candidates in when they come in to declare.
Um, and then, and then we'll switch it back.
And then if they tell us to switch it back, we'd switch it back.
We've been working with the legislature on, they contacted me about a week and a half ago, I'm sure they did. And they said, well, what if we did this and what if we did this, uh, we're exploring ideas, so. And they're gonna do a special session on December ninth that will address what they're thinking of doing, which is possibly moving the filing deadlines for either the congressional candidates or everybody to March instead of being January, the first weekend March.
For everybody?
Maybe.
Or just?
They're, they're just, they're exploring.
That's huge.
Um, if they did that, it's a good chance that it would reduce the signature threshold requirement, um, for whoever's dates are changed and different things like that. And if the spring, if the court grants their appeal and reverses back to the twenty twenty one, and it gives these guys a ton of work last minute, and you'd have to reapprove the precincts. And so we're, we've talked with them about it and they'll probably include some kind of an exception if that does happen, that it doesn't have to go back to the commission for approval, or that it, we, we do a tentative kind of approval. So that it, because that just adds additional time.
Yeah.
Does it add a lot of work to go back because it already exists?
It, it won't add a ton, the biggest thing is if they, if they bifurcate the filing periods, we've got the, our system Vista, which is twenty five years old, and now we're changing boundaries for some and not for others.
Do best, it's all or nothing.
Yeah, there are pluses and minuses, anyway, it's gonna be messy if they, if they revert. And if they change the filing deadlines, it's gonna just be messy.
Does any, do, do any of these, um, precincts have to do with their place, their, what do they call theirs?
Districts.
They follow their districts at all?
Like the Ogden Valley?
Ogden Valley districts, but their council members.
Uh, yeah, so for like Ogden, the twenty nine, oh, the oh six and oh seven, they're both gonna still be in district two.
Oh, the oh six and seven?
Yeah.
So the.
Their districts will be the same, but our precincts will be different.
So currently, their districts that they chose for their council members, do they match at all with any of this or?
Some kind of do and some kind of don't.
I didn't know it was like a puzzle, that's all I was asking, not like it's not.
Those remain the same.
They remain.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
I guess this, this would impact the Senate House statewide too.
Yeah.
Well.
I think it's just.
Is it just, or is it just congressional?
Yeah.
So she didn't redraw all the map, just congressional.
Thank heavens.
Oh, yeah, okay, I was afraid she better knows really indeed. Wow, okay.
So what do we need to do?
So we would want to get on a commission agenda, but after December ninth.
Okay.
Um, so that we'd have time to see maybe if that would change what we're talking about right now.
So the sixteenth?
Well, that, that works for us.
Yeah, it's just gonna, gonna be a simple action item, just saying that you're gonna.
I haven't do the twenty fourth if you had to.
Splitting precincts.
The session's the night, did you say?
Mm-hmm.
So would we wanna come back for a work session after the night if it?
If it changes potentially, yeah.
You could get on the calendar though, just for, and then do the work session the day before.
Do that, it'd still be easier to cancel it, especially if it's a big one like today. Hey, get on there now, hey, I'll do that, it's easy.
Did it hit anyplace Elton Weaver County besides Ogden Valley?
No.
So all of Weaver County got attacked except the valley?
Yeah. We got moved, we got moved to district two, Celeste, and she's a nice girl. She's phenomenal, actually.
Oh, I likes, and I like Mike Kennedy and Blake Moore, so I like them all. Done.
We're just, we don't know him.
Creates a bigger problem for you.
Okay, well, alright.
Okay.
Wow, sorry about that, it kinda trickles down, doesn't it?
We just wanted to make sure that you were aware of what the changes would be.
Yeah.
Before we start poking around in them.
Cool. Okay, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
So, that doesn't require that you don't have to live in the district by which you run?
No.
No.
Blake now would. But Celeste? Yeah, I don't know, because Provo is in district three.
Right.
Mike, where, I don't know where he lives.
He lives in Utah County.
Yeah, he lives in Highland.
Yeah.
I remember, because I tracked it out his family when I was campaigning.
So Celeste right now is two, right? I'm sorry, not familiar with that term. What really screws her up?
Canvassed?
That's who it hurts the most.
Yeah, where, where does she go?
Celeste hurts her the most.
Oh, yeah.
All her power base is down here.
Yeah, who's gonna take four?
Yeah.
This really is interesting.
And these, and these make the population requirement? Way they're dropped?
Apparently.
That's not my understanding.
I don't think, I don't think, I think we're a long ways from hearing the end.
Yes, I mean, just look at this, I can't, because the tasks that the courts look at, only thing they're supposed to look at is a population requirement.
Yeah.
One person, one vote, and that's the law.
Yep.
So.
And, and. Yeah, that's really caused a ruffle. Yes, I think while they're doing it, they ought to really take a strong look at changing the flag one more time, but I say.
Just for fun?
Yeah, just.
Alright, well, we'll watch for it to come on agenda then, okay?
Thank you.
You guys.
Appreciate it, come back anytime.
Yeah, well, we might be here next.
Oh, we got some, uh, some more state funding for elections, so.
Oh, cool.
Help with our, uh, request that you guys.
Cool.
Nice. Hey, thank you.
Alright, commissioners, we need to adjourn and go into our CRA board meetings.
Motion to adjourn and go into the CRA board meeting, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now adjourned and we'll start our CRA board meeting.
Step me online.
She's here, I believe.
Is she?
We'll come back to that.
All right, commissioners, we're back to our work session. Item six. All right, commissioners, we're back to our work session. Item six. Commissioners, we're back to our work session. Item six. Is a discussion regarding wildland participation commitment statement. Rick Cooper. Is a discussion regarding wildland participation commitment statement. Rick Cooper. Is a discussion regarding wildland participation commitment statement. Rick Cooper.
Yep, I'm here. I'll give you what Luke here will give you a quick introduction, so we know who Keith Minton is. Yep, I'm here. I'll give you, what Luke here will give you a quick introduction, so we know who Keith Minton is. Yep, I'm here. I'll give you, what Luke here will give you a quick introduction, so we know who Keith Minton is.
Hey, afternoon, everybody. My name's Luke Minton. I'm the new Wildland Fire Division Chief for Weber Fire District. Hey, afternoon, everybody. My name's Luke Minton. I'm the new Wildland Fire Division Chief for Weber Fire District. Hey, afternoon, everybody. My name's Luke Minton. I'm the new Wildland Fire Division Chief for Weber Fire District. I just retired from a third year career with the US Forest Service. My former office is right down the street here. I just retired from a third year career with the US Forest Service. My former office is right down the street here. I just retired from a third year career with the US Forest Service. My former office is right down the street here.
Well. Well. Well.
You're our new contact, Coop? You're our new contact, Coop? You're our new contact, Coop? He's my new boss.
He's my new boss. He's my new boss.
Oh.
Oh. Oh. Brent couldn't take me any longer and pass me off.
Brent couldn't take me any longer and pass me off. Brent couldn't take me any longer and pass me off.
Hey, you've met us. This is Jessica Clark. She's our, oh, I don't know if you guys said hi to her, our PR person. Hey, you've met us. This is Jessica Clark. She's our, oh, I don't know if you guys said hi to her, our PR person. Hey, you've met us. This is Jessica Clark. She's our, oh, I don't know if you guys said hi to her, our PR person.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
She makes sure that everybody knows what's going on here. Keeps us out of trouble. She makes sure that everybody knows what's going on here. Keeps us out of trouble. She makes sure that everybody knows what's going on here. Keeps us out of trouble.
So I'm just gonna tell you right now. So I'm just gonna tell you right now. So I'm just gonna tell you right now. I'm not forever in this, almost like a decade is all. I'm not forever in this, almost like a decade is all. I'm not forever in this, almost like a decade is all. He's the best thing that's happened to us up this way for any time we have things go to crap. He's the best thing that's happened to us up this way for any time we have things go to crap. He's the best thing that's happened to us up this way for any time we have things go to crap. He, no, he's just phenomenal. And, and put him out in front of a camera and he's even better. He, no, he's just phenomenal. And, and put him out in front of a camera and he's even better. He, no, he's just phenomenal. And, and put him out in front of a camera and he's even better. He could be your Kim Osborne, just like that, without the hair, you know? He could be your Kim Osborne, ju-just like that, without the hair, you know? He could be your Kim Osborne, ju-just like that, without the hair, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
He not, he not. He not, he not. He not, he not.
All right, all right. Enough of that. Here we go. All right, all right. Enough of that. Here we go. All right, all right. Enough of that. Here we go.
So this, uh, quick, um, this is our 2026, uh, wildland, parkland, wildland fire system. So this, uh, quick, um, this is our twenty twenty-sixth, uh, wildland, parkland, wildland fire system. So this, uh, quick, um, this is our twenty twenty-sixth, uh, wildland, parkland, wildland fire system. This is the 2026 participation commitment calculation issued by the Utah Division of Forest Fire and State Lands. This is the twenty twenty-six participation commitment calculation issued by the Utah Division of Forest Fire and State Lands. This is the twenty twenty-six participation commitment calculation issued by the Utah Division of Forest Fire and State Lands. Basically, what they do here is they, they look at Weber County as a whole. Basically, what they do here is they, they look at Weber County as a whole. Basically, what they do here is they, they look at Weber County as a whole. And, uh, and the unincorporated primarily for you, uh, for us. And this is also tied in with Weber Fire District as well. And, uh, and the unincorporated primarily for you, uh, for us. And this is also tied in with Weber Fire District as well. And, uh, and the unincorporated primarily for you, uh, for us. And this is also tied in with Weber Fire District as well. So this, this PC commitment is also reflection of the six cities that we require district covers and the unincorporated as well. And so this, this PC commitment is also reflection of the six cities that we require district covers and the unincorporated as well. And so this, this PC commitment is also reflection of the six cities that we require district covers and the unincorporated as well. It's calculated by our fire history, uh, over the past 10 years. It's a, it takes some 10 year average. It's calculated by our fire history, uh, over the past ten years. It's a, it takes some ten-year average. It's calculated by our fire history, uh, over the past ten years. It's a, it takes some ten-year average. On the back page there, there should be a 10 year average right there. On the back page there, there should be a ten-year average right there. On the back page there, there should be a ten-year average right there. Uh, lists all the fires that have been, uh, that have occurred. Uh, lists all the fires that have been, uh, that have occurred. Uh, lists all the fires that have been, uh, that have occurred. Financially occurred, uh, where the state where we have delegated the incidents to the state of Utah. Financially occurred, uh, where the state where we have delegated the incidents to the state of Utah. Financially occurred, uh, where the state where we have delegated the incidents to the state of Utah. And fire suppression costs. And fire suppression costs. And fire suppression costs. The reflection, one, one fifty-nine or one fifty-eight there, I don't have my glasses on. The reflection, one, one fifty-nine or one fifty-eight there, I don't have my glasses on. The reflection, one, one fifty-nine or one fifty-eight there, I don't have my glasses on. Is a very small amount of money in, in comparison what has actually been spent. Is a very small amount of money in, in comparison what has actually been spent. Is a very small amount of money in, in comparison what has actually been spent. Weber County, we, the largest fire we had was, uh, the, uh, the UNA fire and the gun range fire in 2018 and both of those. Weber County, we, the largest fire we had was, uh, the, uh, the UNA fire and the gun range fire in two thousand and eighteen and both of those. Weber County, we, the largest fire we had was, uh, the, uh, the UNA fire and the gun range fire in two thousand and eighteen and both of those.
Two thousand and eighteen, wasn't it? Two thousand and eighteen, wasn't it? Two thousand eighteen, wasn't it?
Yes. 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 We had the UNA in seventeen and then the gun range in eighteen. We had the UNA in seventeen and then the gun range in eighteen. We had the UNA in seventeen and then the gun range in eighteen.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
Um, and both of those fires were over a million dollars. Um, and both of those fires were over a million dollars. Um, and both of those fires were over a million dollars. Uh, and that's just suppression costs. That's not loss of, of property or vehicles, or that's just suppression costs. Uh, and that's just suppression costs. That's not loss of, of property or vehicles, or that's just suppression costs. Uh, and that's just suppression costs. That's not loss of, of property or vehicles, or that's just suppression costs. So a PC match of, uh, And so a PC match of, uh, And so a PC match of, uh, uh, one fifty-nine is pretty cheap. uh, one fifty-nine is pretty cheap. uh, one fifty-nine is pretty cheap. And, and, and comparison to our actual suppression costs. And, and, in comparison to our actual suppression costs. And, and, in comparison to our actual suppression costs.
We, it'd be nice to have Stephanie here because she, there is something, what, what's that been in the past though? We, it'd be nice to have Stephanie here because she, there is something, what, what's that been in the past though? We, it'd be nice to have Stephanie here because she, there is something, what, what's that been in the past though? It's, it was the, cause there was an issue on this. Sorry if I can just jump in, Madam Chair. It's, it was the, cause there was an issue on this. Sorry if I can just jump in, Madam Chair. It's, it was the, cause there was an issue on this. Sorry if I can just jump in, Madam Chair. It jumped, you had, with all due respect, there was an entourage. Were you here when they brought like five or six people here? Were you in that group? It jumped, you had, with all due respect, there was an entourage. Were you here when they brought like five or six people here? Were you in that group? It jumped, you had, with all due respect, there was an entourage. Were you here when they brought like five or six people here? Were you in that group?
No, no. No, no. No, no.
You know what I'm talking about? You know what I'm talking about? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And they came and. And they came and. And they came and. But the cost of, what's the cost been and where are we today? What, do you have a list of But the cost of, what's the cost been and where are we today? What, do you have a list of But the cost of, what's the cost been and where are we today? What, do you have a list of where, how much they were the last year and the year before that and the year before that? where, how much they were the, yeah, last year and the year before that and the year before that? where, how much they were the, yeah, last year and the year before that and the year before that?
I do, um, just off of memory, cause I, numbers are stuck right in my head. I do, um, just off of memory, cause I, the numbers are stuck right in my head. I do, um, just off of memory, cause I, the numbers are stuck right in my head. Um, last year there was a cost of adjustment inflation suppression costs. Um, last year there was a cost of adjustment inflation suppression costs. Um, last year there was a cost of adjustment inflation suppression costs. And it went to two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars last year of in-kind match. And it went to two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars last year of in-kind match. And it went to two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars last year of in-kind match. Now, since then, we've had a couple of fires drop off. And so they take the high and the low of the fire cost. Now, since then, we've had a couple of fires drop off. And so they take the high and the low of the fire cost. Now, since then, we've had a couple of fires drop off. And so they take the high and the low of the fire cost.
Uh huh. Uh huh. Uh huh.
And then they average it out. And then they average it out. And then they average it out.
So that's why we're, where we are today? So that's why we're, where we are today? So that's why we're, where we are today?
Yes. 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 And we did have a, a large fire drop off. So it dropped from two seventeen, it was like two sixteen or two seventeen last year. And we did have a, a large fire drop off. So it dropped from two seventeen, it was like two sixteen or two seventeen last year. And we did have a, a large fire drop off. So it dropped from two seventeen, it was like two sixteen or two seventeen last year. Back down to, uh, one fifty-nine, but prior to two thousand and twenty-five, we were holding pretty steady Back down to, uh, one fifty-nine, but prior to two thousand and twenty-five, we were holding pretty steady Back down to, uh, one fifty-nine, but prior to two thousand and twenty-five, we were holding pretty steady between seventy and seventy. between seventy and seventy. between seventy and seventy.
Is this the, they call, is this, is this kind of like a woo-ee agreement? Is this the, they call, is this, is this kind of like a woo-ee agreement? Is this the, they call, is this, is this kind of like a woo-ee agreement?
Um, it's not really a woo-ee agreement. Uh, what it is, it, uh, state of Utah has signed an agreement with Weber County and Weber Fire District. Um, it's not really a woo-ee agreement. Uh, what it is, it, uh, state of Utah has signed an agreement with Weber County and Weber Fire District. Um, it's not really a woo-ee agreement. Uh, what it is, it, uh, state of Utah has signed an agreement with Weber County and Weber Fire District. Uh, that we will focus in on three things. Uh, that we will focus in on three things. Uh, that we will focus in on three things. One is mitigation. One is mitigation. One is mitigation. Prevention and suppression. Prevention and suppression. Prevention and suppression. And then those three things calculate. And then those three things calculate. And then those three things calculate. Uh, if we do those three things, they will take all suppression costs of any fire that has been delegated. Uh, if we do those three things, they will take all suppression costs of any fire that has been delegated. Uh, if we do those three things, they will take all suppression costs of any fire that has been delegated. And so there's no financial burden on the county and or Weaver Fire District, the state of Utah, Forest Fire and State Lands will resume And so there's no financial burden on the county and or Weber Fire District, the state of Utah, Forest Fire and State Lands will resume And so there's no financial burden on the county and or Weber Fire District, the state of Utah, Forest Fire and State Lands will resume that financial responsibility. that financial responsibility. that financial responsibility.
So. 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 You probably already know this commissioners, but this kind of like is insurance policy for us. You probably already know this commissioners, but this kind of like is insurance policy for us. You probably already know this commissioners, but this kind of like is insurance policy for us. That's all basically what it is with the state. Something goes to crap, then we're in good shape. That's all basically what it is with the state. If something goes to crap, then we're in good shape. That's all basically what it is with the state. If something goes to crap, then we're in good shape.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
And the great thing about it is, is I love the service after the sale. And the great thing about it is, is I love the service after the sale. And the great thing about it is, is I love the service after the sale. So. 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 In our area. In our area. In our area. Yeah. 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 Unless he's gonna be like the head pote and tape for the whole state, I want to keep Cooper right there. Unless he's gonna be like the head pote and tape for the whole state, I want to keep Cooper right there. Unless he's gonna be like the head pote and tape for the whole state, I want to keep Cooper right there. Whatever poke tape position is for state fire. Whatever pote tape position is for state fire. Whatever pote tape position is for state fire.
Yeah, it, good, good point, Commissioner Harvey. It's just a, basically an insurance policy. Yeah, it, good, good point, Commissioner Harvey. It's just a, basically an insurance policy. Yeah, it, good, good point, Commissioner Harvey. It's just a, basically an insurance policy. Now, we refer districts commitment to this is we meet the one fifty-nine and exceed that every year. Now, we refer district's commitment to this is we meet the one fifty-nine and exceed that every year. Now, we refer district's commitment to this is we meet the one fifty-nine and exceed that every year. And it's just an in-kind match. Uh, there's really very little hard currency exchanged. And it's just an in-kind match. Uh, there's really very little hard currency exchanged. And it's just an in-kind match. Uh, there's really very little hard currency exchanged. I mean, the district purchase of, uh, brush engine, or we hire personnel, the, the mitigation crew. I mean, the district purchase of, uh, a brush engine, or we hire personnel, the, the mitigation crew. I mean, the district purchase of, uh, a brush engine, or we hire personnel, the, the mitigation crew. I know you were still on the board with us when we hired the mitigation crew, so I know you were still on the board with us when we hired the mitigation crew, so I know you were still on the board with us when we hired the mitigation crew, so their hours, and that's really the only hard currency that's exchanged, but their time is, goes towards this. their hours, and that's really the only hard currency that's exchanged, but their time is, goes towards this. their hours, and that's really the only hard currency that's exchanged, but their time is, goes towards this.
Toward the one fifty-nine? Toward the one fifty-nine? Toward the one fifty-nine?
Yeah, one fifty-nine. Yeah, one fifty-nine. Yeah, one fifty-nine.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And then we, we basically, last year, I think we did over almost six hundred thousand in, in PC match last year. And then we, we basically, last year, I think we did over almost six hundred thousand in, in PC match last year. And then we, we basically, last year, I think we did over almost six hundred thousand in, in PC match last year. And that's mitigation preparedness. A lot of our in-kind match comes through is the mitigation part of it. We work with the communities. And that's mitigation preparedness. A lot of our in-kind match comes through is the mitigation part of it. We work with the communities. And that's mitigation preparedness. A lot of our in-kind match comes through is the mitigation part of it. We work with the communities. And it's where I'd say over fifty percent we generate is, is from the people doing the mitigation, we're chipping and, and stuff like that. And it's where I'd say over fifty percent we generate is, is from the people doing the mitigation, we're chipping and, and stuff like that. And it's where I'd say over fifty percent we generate is, is from the people doing the mitigation, we're chipping and, and stuff like that.
Okay. 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 Anything else? Anything else? Anything else?
No questions, no questions. No questions, no questions. No questions, no questions.
No questions for me. No questions for me? No questions for me? Okay, this was just more FYI. Okay, this was just more FYI. Okay, this was just more FYI.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I just need, if you guys approve this, I will pass this on to Tracy. I just need, if you guys approve this, I will pass this on to Tracy. I just need, if you guys approve this, I will pass this on to Tracy. And, uh, get approved. The PC statement will be out in about ten days, ten to fifteen days. And, uh, get approved. The PC statement will be out in about ten days, ten to fifteen days. And, uh, get approved. The PC statement will be out in about ten days, ten to fifteen days. Um, I don't think I'll need a signature from either of you three. I think I can do it through Weber Fire District's chief. Um, I don't think I'll need a signature from either of you three. I think I can do it through Weber Fire District's chief. Um, I don't think I'll need a signature from either of you three. I think I can do it through Weber Fire District's chief. For Clark, I think I can get him to sign it, but when that is signed, I'll make sure you guys. For Clark, I think I can get him to sign it, but when that is signed, I'll make sure you guys. For Clark, I think I can get him to sign it, but when that is signed, I'll make sure you guys.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
You get the questions. You get the questions. You get the questions.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Perfect. Perfect. Perfect.
Sounds good. Thank you. Sounds good. Thank you. Sounds good. Thank you.
That it? That it? That it?
Thanks. Thanks. Thanks.
Nope, that was quick and easy. I told you. Nope, that was quick and easy. I told you. Nope, that was quick and easy. I told you. And all of you have a Merry Christmas. And all of you have a Merry Christmas. And all of you have a Merry Christmas.
Same to you. Same to you. Same to you.
You need burn, come and see. You need burn, come and see. You need burn, come and see.
Yeah, okay, thanks so much. Yeah, okay, thanks so much. Yeah, okay, thanks so much.
You have fun. You have fun.
Again, if you guys ever have any other questions, feel free to reach out. Again, if you guys ever have any other questions, feel free to reach out. Again, if you guys ever have any other questions, feel free to reach out.
Great, thank you so much. Great, thank you so much. Great, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys. All right, thank you guys. All right, thank you guys.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
Jessica. 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 You have a Merry Christmas. You have a Merry Christmas. You have a Merry Christmas.
See you later. See you later. See you later.
See you guys. See you guys. See you guys.
See ya. See ya. See ya.
A couple minutes. A couple minutes. A couple minutes.
All right, we're back for item seven discussion regarding Cloverdale.
I don't see stuff, oh yeah. Um, Rick and I had a brief conversation in the, in the lobby a week or so ago. And he's got some really great information he wants to share with you guys. And I thought it'd be relevant just to have it in a, in a work session and have some discussion. So I'll, I'll let Rick just kind of dive into it.
We've kind of been sharing, I, uh, we get, we're getting ready, uh, to develop on this piece of property, um, and we've uncovered some things, uh.
Of course, can you give us the approximate?
Well, let's see, this is three thousand south to the south. We've got Hinckley Drive to the north and it's right along the tracks. I don't know what the west is on that, about twenty four hundred west, probably.
You want to pull this up?
It's out there just off Midland Drive, right?
Yes, yeah, well, we're east of it and, uh.
Midland and nineteen hundred west, is that what we're talking about?
Uh, yes, yes, and it's in Roy, right on the West Haven border.
Do you want to pull this?
Yeah, probably, if we, if we can pull the J S up.
And working through all of our title objections, um, yeah, we discovered, used to be a town there, railroad town basically called Cloverdale. And, um, within that area, we have found that some of the street dedications have never been the county. So the county owns some streets within here that never existed. And we're just looking to actually have you not deed it to us, but we're asking that the county consider quick claim deeding it to Roy City. So that all of the property then, uh, is within the Roy City boundaries.
Okay, where are we from here? You want this mouse?
Mine the right?
Yeah, you're right there, yeah. See, the Denver Rio Grande Railroad, it's everything. And then you've got Pacific Union Pacific, so this is, I've highlighted it, this area right here is.
Is it this where my air was?
Yes. And I don't know exactly where, but I'm being told that these streets are still dedicated to the county and I believe you have the deeds.
Which streets?
Well, they don't exist.
They don't exist.
Okay, so I don't see any streets in there.
Yeah, they don't exist. The, we sent the deeds and everything over, um, and it just, like I say, just to clean up title when we close.
So you explain it to me, we had deeds to dedicate this, they're recorded or not?
Yes.
So it's on, so this is on record?
So I've got a very brief amount of knowledge on this, it got handed over to me. So their surveyor came in and did some digging through the vault, found an old abstract from the fifties or sixties that had not been digitized.
Nineteen fifties or eighteen?
Nineteen.
You know, I want to make sure we're talking about what we're talking about. There you see that, eighteen fifty.
Between these deeds, and I don't know which exact one had not been found, but we have a deed, a quick claim deed from nineteen fifty five, and I haven't gone back to validate any of the chain of title or any of that. They quit claimed deed from Ogden City to the county that says all of the, I'll summarize, roads and lanes within the Cloverdale addition dedicated eighteen ninety. And then a few years later, so that was eighteen fifty, or sorry.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Don't get Harvey going again.
And then nineteen fifty nine, I believe, well, actually, I don't know the details on this one. So in nineteen fifty nine, there's a totally different party. Uh, there's an additional deed, but it's not, but, oh, there we go. Okay, yes, nineteen fifty nine, I believe, had conveyed to Lawrence M. Malin. And they identify these as what had been now vacated in Cloverdale addition. So I haven't vetted the descriptions on here, there is enough language in there to presume that it is the roads in there. Um, I'm just looking at the surface on this, I haven't done the research that your surveyor's done on it.
Well, anybody but nope.
It looks to me like, hey, Ogden City must have had the rights conveyed it to Weaver County and then Weaver County would have conveyed it to Lawrence Malon, Malin. Is that?
Um, there's parts of it to him, but.
So this is a portion and then the remainder remains here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're just trying to just clean up the boundaries on it as all, and then, and it's probably something that I would get in front of our surveyor and meet with you guys and just clarify, but.
Um, can you show us on here where you're anticipating this property to be?
The streets are in this end, I'm really good with this mouse.
Okay, so your title report is just saying there's some color of title in those areas from the streets that.
Were dedicated.
Dedicated and potentially somewhat vacated, but still maybe not quite.
In question, we just take all the questions out of it.
Okay, so what you would be looking to do would be to have the commissioners vacate any interest in roads through that area.
Yes, and, and we would just give it to Roy City. Cause then Roy City, then we bring in our project to Roy and Roy approves it because they can't approve a project that the county owns the property.
So why don't you get your title company to figure out between them and the surveyors, they should come to us and give us the description of what you need to vacate. I don't, you know, I don't think it's right for us to do your work, so.
Well, I, well, first of all, I'm not asking for that.
Okay, but I'm saying get with your title company, surveyor, and then come to us.
What I am asking is a willingness to just help us clean it up.
Yeah, I.
I don't see why you wouldn't.
No, I, okay. I don't see a problem.
No, I, I'm not asking you to do our work.
Okay.
But I am asking for, um, but which you've conveyed.
If you do all the work, then if you get all that stuff done, or is it gonna, you're gonna run into a roadblock?
Yeah.
No, just get it, get the title work, surveyor together, come to us, tell them, they'll put together what descriptions they need, we'll verify it and it'll be a clean deal.
Okay.
So how do you access that piece?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Four thousand and then we're buying a house, uh, that, so up here under Hinckley.
Mm-hmm.
Top would be the northeast corner. There's a road that goes under that now, there'll be one going to the west and there'll be one going out on fourth house.
Yeah, there's a road, oh, sorry, show me, there's a road.
Can you, who's got this, who's got the, who's?
Right here. Let's, I'm sorry, I was looking down when you pointed out.
There's a road here?
No, up on the other corner, north.
Up here?
Yeah, it goes under Hinckley up there.
It goes under Hinckley?
Yeah. Yeah, and we've already, we've met with fire, it's more of a secondary, uh, emergency type E ground. So, and the landowner has given us a, a right of way.
Then you have a house on four thousand?
Yeah, there's a, well, it's actually, see about thirty nine oh eight, right there at that cul-de-sac, we're buying that house as well.
Oh, I see, right there, and then how are you gonna get across the Denver Rio Grande?
Uh, that's a trail system, not a track. Uh, we have the documentation that the Rio Grande, the railroad vacated all their rights to it, but U T A actually has it and U T A has granted us a crossing. So that's all in place.
That's pretty cool to access that piece of land, honestly.
I think it would work really well, um, so.
Isn't that where the Golden Spoke Trail System is though? That's pretty heavily used.
Yeah, it's very heavily used actually, but Roy City, when they granted it all, they came into an agreement with U T A that they would be allowed one crossing over that trail and.
We're gonna exercise that.
Gonna exercise that one right, we have. So that's done, four thousand is going to get a roundabout, um, out on the street, kind of somewhere over there, like forty eight hundred has.
Right there at the trail crossing?
Yeah, just down there at the bottom, we're gonna, we're actually gonna redesign the trail a little bit to accommodate that, but, uh, yeah, it's all, all done and wrapped up, ready to go.
You wouldn't know, look at me, but I'm pretty favorable on these trails. Oh, we love the trail. You know, have them, I want people to be able to go across there safe without getting hit going across there. Just, I'm so, you're here to find out where you are as far as the temperature, but I'm, I'm telling you right now, I want people to be able to go by having, oh, there's a bar coming, I gotta stop. Oh, little Johnny, you gotta stop right there. So I don't know how that's gonna work, but that's kind of important. I, I commend you for your creativity, for being able to access that piece and do that, that's fantastic. Off of thirty nine hundred, you say, right?
Yeah, is that what it is?
That's what it is right here, yeah. You know, but I, I still worry about how do they get across right here, Rick?
Well, right now, it's, we're, we're not going to increase or decrease the safety issues you're discussing.
Well, you're, you're putting more cars on it, it.
Yeah, yeah, but most of ours will be directed down and come out as that twenty six hundred, I believe.
Oh, yeah, hold on.
And probably hit mid.
I gotta find twenty six hundred.
So they'll have access to all those streets, so they'll have access to.
These people in Roy will come, they'll come here and then they'll come out twenty six hundred. I'm, I'm worried about the people being able to just keep going on their bicycles. Cause you're gonna come out right here, they're gonna go into here right here.
Yeah.
Right there.
Commissioner, some communities put a two-way stop, so the vehicles stop, but the cyclists don't have to. Um, you don't have too much traffic on there that you would interrupt the vehicles too much, so you give the priority to the bicycles and the pedestrians.
Okay.
We could do that and maybe that's a condition of vacating the public rights away or something.
I'm just letting you know, right here, right now, that I'm gonna be kinda, they're, they're spending with that active transportation, you know, you see, uh, bridges even going off that new fifty six hundred to protect that access for those bicycle guys and that, that's a perfect example. I mean, that's over the top, but that's a perfect example. They want to protect the bicyclists and the pedestrians to be able to walk without having the fear of being hit by a car, so, you know, if to fly, it was a flyover, I think, bridge. It's there and it's down there a little further in Davis County and I don't, what I don't want to do is have to come back and say, ah, trails people now need a million dollars to build a flyover bridge to fly that, you know what I mean? So that's a big thing for me, just for our guys.
You want, you want to tie that to the vacation of the roads?
Um.
Is that what you're saying?
I want to know what the plan, how that's gonna work, how many people are you gonna put in that piece?
That's enough for Roy City, no?
Yeah, that's it, Roy City, I just.
We actually have an M D A with Roy already approved, but it's, it's four hundred doors.
Good for you, that's okay, I don't, that's okay. Um, that's, that's eight hundred trips, isn't it? Eight hundred, how many trips did Charlie, you know that number?
Eight per door in the state of Utah, it's eleven and a half.
Per door?
Yeah.
Per day?
Per day, and a trip is one way, so out is one, back is one.
I like it, but I don't, you gotta work out the trail thing for me, Rick, that's a big thing for me, better trail thing.
Well, well, I, I know Roy City's actually hired an engineering firm to design the roundabout and they are rerouting the trail a little bit to encompass, be encompassed in the roundabout. So maybe when that's provided, I can share that with you.
Okay.
I get it, I mean, but at the end of the day, this, they won't, they'll be crossing a path, but then there's the center area where, uh, well, no cars.
Is there a, why four thousand? Is there a, yeah, there's must be, this must be bridge to get over this.
It's a flashing.
No.
Just a crosswalk.
It's a cross.
Light cross.
Yeah.
Which is kind of, in my mind, the roundabout makes it safer because you're coming down off the track and you're like right there and then.
So, so there's a flashing light right here, so people coming on four thousand, there's a flashing light, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, oh, maybe, okay.
As far as the vacation of the roads go, I don't think there's an issue. If we want to work.
Yeah, we'll get all the information.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, if I conveyed, I was asking you to do it for me, I apologize. Um, cause that was not our intent, we just, if it comes back and the records prove, we're just looking to vacate those streets that don't exist, but on paper.
Yeah, no, on that side of it. I'm gonna just throw you, since we're in the early stages of this, I'm gonna just throw something else out and I may be totally wrong on this, but there's gotta be some kind of crossing right here. No, this is that great, isn't it? I said, there's our school and the library, gosh, that's a great plan.
And you got U T A, got the hub just south of us.
So what I was gonna say, let me just finish my thought, one day, maybe not in our lifetime, but one day, that's gonna be a, a separated crossing. You said it, separated crossing. So if, if that were the case, if the trail, and it doesn't even have to be this wide, I'd be okay. Deed and all this property to you guys for a trail right up next to this right here, so the trail came like this.
Okay.
If you're just kind of looking.
We are, we're always.
Something like, something, so, so they could get, somehow you could get through, uh, separated.
Yeah.
But, uh, well, that's, there's a lot, that's pretty wide and if we just had a little, enough for, how wide's our trails?
We're doing ten, but you guys.
That's fifteen, twelve.
This current section.
That's fifteen, well, maybe not the asphalt, but the section is fifteen.
He's not kind of passionate about this, just so you know, is from Ogden Canyon, this is called the Golden Spoke and it's the second longest contiguous trail system in North America. So the less opportunity we have to put cars and people on the same plane, on the same grade, is what I'm after.
Makes sense.
So.
Yeah.
But it's okay if it does this, cause it does that going all the way down the, the river, right? I'm okay with the little, little, and long trails and all, that's okay, but that's where I am on that.
That trail system goes all the way in front of, Hittfeld does it not?
It, no, it's way out west, it takes that old abandoned rail, it goes all the way down and then it ends up kind of tying. It's way out west, Clearfield, Leighton, then you can come in to kind, it gets a little closer, you, uh, to Farmington, you can hook up with that Farmington station. It's west of the, it's west of the.
I do my best to keep my family away from this place.
But you get what I'm saying.
Yes, I do, sir, I absolutely understand it.
All righty.
Appreciate it.
Can I clarify one thing? So.
We gotta be on this.
I could talk about road vacations. You're, you're actually looking for a, a deed. So you would request a quick claim deed for the county to quick claim any interest they may have to Roy City.
Yeah, not the house, but to Roy City.
That's all we need.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be a quick claim.
Yeah, yeah, we'll make that happen.
Yeah.
Okay, next, item eight, discussion regarding Eden Farms.
This group?
Yep.
I'm gonna send some time to Charlie maybe for a minute.
Same group?
Charlie, same group.
Okay, you can start your speech again in five minutes.
Charlie, you taking this one?
Sure, do you mind if I drive?
You go. We don't need trails in the valley, by the way.
Yeah, we're all about it.
Y'all know Charlie?
Unfortunately, we do, yeah, I'm joking.
Easy.
We, we like Charlie a lot, see.
He's pretty smart.
Sometimes, about sometimes.
Ninety-eight percent of the time, I'll agree with you.
Fair enough.
Okay.
So this property right here and this property right here, um, these guys have applied for a rezone of both of those properties, asking to rezone to the F R three zone. F R three is our higher density zone in the Ogden Valley. Um, they've committed to transferring development rights to the property in order to do this. Um, it is on for a public hearing in tomorrow's, um, meeting. It was supposed to be on last week, but we had a noticing error, so, um, we got it in for planning commission for tomorrow's meeting, not the county commission. Um, after planning commission, it'll come to you guys, these guys are hoping for a decision on the rezone for the end of the year.
So, so is that the?
This is on, this is the power line corridor.
Okay.
Sewer pond.
That's sewer pond, okay. Where it's a power door line corridor.
Right here.
Yeah.
Okay, so a couple of things that I've suggested, I am recommending approval. When you, when you run this through the general plan, you kind of have a, a, a question of values or a question of policy. Um, you've got the Eden Village Center, which is right about here. Um, they're, they're just outside of the quarter mile, they're, well, they're about, the furthest distance is about a quarter mile outside of the quarter mile, so half a mile from the, the Wolf Creek Center, right, who said Wolf Creek Center? Um, general plan says that your higher density housing should go, um, in your village areas and in areas surrounding those village areas. Um, but it also suggests that you don't sprawl it out too far, so really the question is, is where do you end it? Um, where do you end that kind of density? What we're looking at here, and what I think the planning commission will talk a lot about tomorrow is right now, you gotta, you, you kind of have a straight line that comes down here. You got higher density there, higher density here, you've got some condos going up right here, you've got condos and, and townhomes over here in the ridges. Um, what I've heard from some planning commission members is, uh, that they would like this to be the hard line and not allow this rezone to happen. Um, if you look at the bigger picture, um, if that rezone doesn't happen and you're not transferring units in, those units are going somewhere else, you guys are looking for a hundred and ten, right?
Yes.
Hundred and ten units here.
On how many?
Hundred and ten.
On how many acres?
Oh, sorry, um, the rezone itself is eight point.
Well, it's all, yeah, it's those two, and then if you come down, there's a few right toward that right there, there's like eight units there, so you gotta, the bulk of it's up on those two.
Yeah. Yeah, and the rezone itself, if I remember right, was just these two properties, but the master plan shows the road coming down and there was some, some density that comes down into this area here.
Underneath the power lines?
Um, I think.
There's.
There's some recreational.
We've submitted an application underneath the power lines for parking and some, non-permanent because they've got something that, they said they've got some plants. This, the triangular piece, go to your right, Charlie, if you would, and then up. That triangular, no, come over.
To the left.
Go west, stop.
No, just your cursor, move your cursor.
Do this.
Utah Power owns this, so these are all the name of Utah Power, this, this, all these, these two, that's theirs. And so we've asked for an easement on there, like I said, for a parking lot, cause there's, if you look at where the trail system is in the valley, there's, in order to, this is, this is a place where it comes close to the road, so we thought if we could put some parking in there, but then we've also suggested like some pickleball courts, so to try and have a place where people could come to get to a trail system that's under it, that's easy access, it's right there, and so, so that's what we've submitted to, um, to Utah, to Rocky Mountain Power would be some improvements under those lines to be able to accommodate, not just trail, but also parking and where that's an easy access spot, some other amenities with it. Or that's an easy access spot, some other amenities with it. Which we've told them would be non-permanent, so if they decided to do something underneath those power lines, which. I doubt that they would, I think if they're gonna develop, it's gonna be on their two lower parcels, or in that rectangular parcel, I don't think they're gonna wanna build under those. But we've told them they would be non-permanent, so they'd want something adjusted, then that would be taken care of.
So, just a question of where the. Urban area, urban quote, in quotes, area of Wolf Creek ends, um. There's a lot of, uh, influence in the general plan that says that you should have your higher density and then kinda radiate it out, um, uh, as transition goes to rural. Um, there are some people who think you get your higher density, you pump, punch it into a smaller spot, and then you have a hard line, and rural's right on the outside of that line. Uh, those are called urban growth boundaries. Um, our general plan isn't super clear, and I think it's not clear for a reason. Uh, because it's trying to open, keep, keep open as many opportunities as possible to move density around, so that we're not seeing. Um, open spaces, uh, or areas that are ideal for open spaces being developed. So, um, from a staff recommendation, we are recommending, um, approval of it, but we would totally understand a recommendation for denial of it. I think the planning commission probably will recommend denial of it. Um, I think one of their findings for, probably be timing. Um, considering that this will be in a city.
Go back in.
In a few weeks.
So, right now, they're saying this is kinda the line right here, and, 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 and they, they wanted to move that boundary like that. Right?
Yeah.
This is the line currently.
Yep, sorry, let me turn on zoning, so you can see what that looks like, where, where's all my stuff? Oh, maybe I can, don't have zoning here.
One thing I think maybe would help with that is. We've been dealing with the neighboring HOAs, and we're talking about connectivity to the streets in Moose Hollow, and. And all of that will have connectivity and flow through. I think if the streets connect like that, it kinda brings it all into.
And the corridor there with the power line creates a buffer between where we're gonna have our density, which is adjacent to Moose Hollow. And then you come down lower there towards the road, and so, it's, it's not coming like right up to the road.
So you're next to the O one?
O one. Yeah, so the O one, uh, the configuration of this property over here, this is, I think, uh, the gentleman's name is Howard Schmidt. Um, and he was granted, uh, development agreement, it's still in place, he just hasn't done anything with it just yet. Um, for single-family residential in the yellow area. Um, he was, it was supposed to be kind of a golf course development, I don't know that you're gonna get a golf course out of it, but you at least got some O one zoning out of it. Um, you can see the O one zoning up here where the actual golf course is right now. Uh, and so, uh, I, I would agree with, uh, with Dana, that I think that. Um, power line corridor is a great, uh, growth boundary if we're gonna have one. Down to the south of that, um, you've got a little bit of C V two commercial property, which is those storage units. Um, they're pretty well disguised from the street, um, with vegetation and a wall. Um, you've got larger, uh, agricultural and residential uses to the south here. This property here is the property that Powder Mountain wants to put a parking right on. So, and, and that's gonna be considered in the same meeting, um, one of the, uh, points of discussion is if. Powder Mountain's parking right, if it gets approved and that intersection is here, we'd like these guys to work with Powder Mountain to come up with a four-way intersection. That works best for that community area right there.
U T A actually wants it to come down a little bit farther south, it'd be on both sides of the road there, so if you kind of just come down. Uh, and through whatever's on the right, right there, they want that, and what Powder Mountain's got, they want an intersection there about a thousand feet south of. What's the, the road that's. That's, um, uphill from, that comes in just to, on the top of the. That's it, yeah. So they, they like Willow Brook, and then they wanna come down a thousand feet, and they want the neighbors to collaborate with, with a four-way down there.
Actually, makes a lot of sense. And if you did it that way, if you, if you had that four-way intersection coming up and connecting to Moose Hollow, that would be the new southern entrance. Of that Wolf Creek community, and so you can see that would get some, a lot of traffic there at that intersection.
So go east here, I wanna see. Or excuse me, go, go north. I wanna see up. Up on Fox. So these are all, is this part of Moose Hollow here?
Yeah.
Yes, it's townhomes.
Okay.
And then you've got, where's Kobe? I just. Right there.
Little bits of Kobe.
Right in there, got it.
Kobe's here.
Okay. So you've got the development rights?
Currently, yes.
You do? So we requiring T D R?
Yeah. It'd be part of the, uh. Development agreement, uh, a T D R requirement would be.
Okay.
Which we have arranged, and. Our agreement is just if we can get there and gets done, then we'll. But there's no use transacting it until we.
Yeah.
Know we can do it.
So are you looking to do a similar product like Moose Hollow, or what's?
Yeah, have you seen, maybe I brought some.
This, well, this is going to Planning Commission tomorrow.
Yeah.
Alright. I don't think I need to see the concept, I wanna see, I wanna hear what Planning Commission has to say about it, and even if you assume that they're gonna. Uh, recommend denial, I wanna hear their discussion. So, that's where I'm at right now.
When you say you're dropping the intersection down, isn't there a big slew right there on the south side where the barn?
There is. Um, there's wetlands right here.
Yeah, yeah, right there.
There'd have to be some remediation if that happened.
Okay.
I know one, one other thing that Powder Mountain said is, you, you don't would really like them to have making two entrances into this.
Yeah.
One of the things that you'll see, um, when the Powder Mountain project gets to you, uh, that staff's asking for, staff's asking for quite a bit of improvements. For that parking lot along that highway, including a pretty long center turn lane for vehicle queuing. That's if they have a single access, and if they do get with you, that, and you have two accesses in, you wouldn't need as long of a, uh, queuing lane for. For one single, and if that parking lot, or excuse me, if that, um, intersection was here, that'd be pretty ideal. Um, cause then if you have this entrance here, you may even get you to approve an entrance over here that is offset. If this is their main entrance into that parking lot, and then a main entrance of two road that goes up. Some opportunities to look at, you know, it's gonna be, uh, the biggest player, um, on how they want their access management to go on that highway, but. Um, where we've got potential development on both sides of the road, we're recommending that both of those, uh, developers work with each other to. And you got figures with that.
Hey, I would think so.
Alright, well, I guess we'll see this back then after it goes to planning.
I'm assuming it's gonna be very fast. Limited time.
Sounds like it, okay.
Well, we just wanted to get a temperature for it, thank you for your time, I know.
Thank you.
We'll work hard on it. I'll get back to you guys with, uh, the Cloverdale information.
Appreciate you. Alright.
Thank you.
See everyone.
See you.
Alright, let's, thank you.
See you.
Karen, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
See you again.
So is the western, we can have one tiny commission now, is that?
This one, yeah.
As of tomorrow.
That's what I heard.
As of tomorrow.
Well, we have a lot of big stuff out west.
Alright. Thank you. Uh, yeah. Our next item is discussion regarding excavation agreement for promontory commerce center P I D wastewater lift and line. It looks like we're waiting for Chad and Lauren, I don't know if they're out there, oh, in Portland. We have Stephanie Russell and Sean.
Yeah, can do it, this one we can.
The ambassador.
We better not do it without court.
No.
Please Santa Claus, somebody said that the other days.
I got it, I just got it.
I couldn't find it.
I've got, I, I, well, I asked for it again, cause I don't remember. Went through all the ones from.
So did I.
Stacy. And everything but the ditch and sink and planning. Listen, let uncle.
Afford it to us.
Let's, let, let Uncle Harv take care of you again, here. Would you? Ah, you're such a nice guy. Wow, wow. You know, I don't care what they say. Well, who's they? Those people? Those people.
It's like Charlie's a gearing up for Christmas.
Last time I grew it out. I didn't have this.
You guys just let me go on on the trails and all of this. I'd love a little backup, but you know, if you want me to do it all by myself, as the lone bald fat guy, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, Commissioners, we're on item nine now, discussion regarding. Excavation agreement for Promontory Commerce Center PID wastewater lift and line. Oh, I introduced this already, and then we muted.
Yeah.
It sounds familiar. Okay, Stephanie.
Okay, so this is the last step in the process of getting the lift and the line. Uh, the Promontory Commerce Center lift and line uh project going physically going. Um, we've been meeting with them on with our team and um we have drafted an addendum. Uh, agreement that will go with the excavation permit. So they've got their construction permit, county's issued that, they've got their state permitting, that's been issued. The last thing we have left to do um is the excavation permit. There were some concerns from Gary's team that we uh have been working through with the Promontory Commerce Center. Um, uh, promise center Commerce Center PID and the construction company that they hired. Um, so Portland has drafted that. I think we are all in agreement of the terms and conditions as of last week. Is that correct, Gary?
I think so.
Okay. Um, so we, the last step would be to get this for review for you guys.
Actually, Chad reminded me.
So I have just two real quick comments. So these were just, I know when we were on the phone last, we wanted to check with the roads department.
Okay.
So the thing we kind of had uh comments that I received back from them is is number one. Um, ensuring that if they're to maintain and plow it, that it gets done before eight o'clock. Cause if not, then our guys have to do it for the school. But I don't know if there's a way we can just eight AM, yeah. And there's a way of putting some sort of a stipulation in their requirement that they get it done maybe even before seven thirty. Just so that we have the flexibility of the half an hour. Um, the other thing is is maybe just limiting this just to the section of nine hundred south from forty one hundred west, forty seven hundred west. Um, the other one's gonna be a perpendicular crossing on twelfth street. And I don't think we want to deal with just a perpendicular or have them be able to just maintain that small section. They should just do that as a hard surface to get us through the winter time, especially with the traffic, just.
Oh, boy.
So potholes will not.
Yeah.
Go twenty four hours. Sorry about that. I.
That's okay.
Get those.
No, that's great. We're, we're really working hard to get this through. So uh Portland, if you don't mind kind of going through just the, the, a basic summary of what we've put together so the commission's aware of that. So they know what they're gonna be voting on. Um, and this really was a combination of Gary's team and the PID and the construction company. All working together to find the most efficient and effective and safest way to start this project. Because we're going into winter and also there is a section that goes in front of a school. So we want to make sure safety is the number one concern and that we're mitigating any potential for. The road collapsing or for someone falling in a trench um and to also deal with the traffic uh control in that area. So that's really what this uh addendum addresses is all the concerns that the county had. And then the timeline that the construction company has because they're, they're running off of the art state ARPA funds.
Right.
And so we have a very small window to get this done. So um Portland, if you don't mind just kind of summarizing what they're gonna be, what's gonna be put in front of them, I'd appreciate that. That'd be great.
Sure. First with one of those, with respect to one of those questions, um. They did include, uh, my understanding is Dallin in the last meeting wanted us to include this exhibit. As an exhibit to the, which. Does appear to show just the segment from forty seven hundred west.
Um, that's one.
To forty one hundred west. So that, and, and the way that language reads is. This agreement addresses work shown in the attached exhibit one. So does that address that concern?
So.
Okay. And then a question maybe um. Before seven thirty AM, they need to do the snow plowing. Is that if they get notified that day? Or if they get notified like the previous day that the storm is coming or?
But yeah, so this is, well, this is what we're trying to avoid is is that it be in a rough area and then our guys getting there, the school calling our guys up and have to go plow it. So uh rough dirt area, they don't really go good with their plow. So they need to be on top of it, knowing the storms are coming to know to do it, even the night before, just to be there or show up every morning at seven thirty.
So just make sure it's done before seven thirty. Okay. So this uh again applies just along nine hundred south from forty one hundred west to forty seven hundred west. And it talks about, um, i- it's very short and simple, really. They have to comply with all excavation permit requirements unless it's changed by this agreement. So they have to get a permit, first of all, and this supplements that. The county engineer or designee is given the discretion to allow them. More than the standard seventy two hours to repair and restore the road surface after the time of an excavation. And that has to be specified in writing by the county engineer or designee. In addition to that, it allows them not to restore the road surface using hot mix asphalt. It gives them the ability, again, if written approval is granted by the county engineer or designee. To patch the surface with a temporary surface, which. Based on what I heard last time can be either base course or another material subject to the approval of the county engineer. And then by May fifteenth of next year, they have to replace that temporary surface. With an approved hot mix asphalt um surface meeting the county's standards.
Yeah.
And up until that time. The PID is fully responsible for snow removal and maintenance of that temporary surface. We put in here that when they are notified of potholes that need to be repaired, they shall ensure that they are repaired within twenty four hours. And then we're gonna add language about the snow removal by seven thirty AM. And then we also put in here a paragraph saying the PID will indemnify and hold the county harmless. From against any liability arising or related in any way to that temporary road surface. Or to any aspect of the work covered by the excavation permit. So um, the final thing then is the bond requirement. Normally, there is a requirement for them with an excavation permit. To put up some kind of a financial guarantee to ensure that it gets put back together and repaired the right way. But here Stephanie was able to um look at the agreements that we have with the PID already. And based on those agreements, um, she worked with Lauren. Uh, to determine that that does already provide the county with access to sufficient funds through the ARPA funding. To handle anything if they don't do it right. So we've got the funding there in place to cover this already. So we are excusing them from providing an additional bond. We also did see a copy of the PID's uh payment and performance funds that they got from their contractor. Which give the PID access to funds if the contractor leaves without completing it. And so they would have access to those funds as well. So they would be able presumably to have funding to get it done, but we've got the backstop, I guess, of the, the agreement that we have with them.
Yeah.
So that's it.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a couple if I might.
Mm-hmm.
So we've got control of the Utah, Utah gave those funds.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
And then, so how much of that road are they going into? Where's that, where's the lot new line going?
So it's go mostly, it bounces around a little bit, Commissioner. It starts on the south side of the road. Well, maybe the middle, it comes south, then it goes north, south, just due to the manholes going around the curve just west of the elementary school there.
Okay, so it cuts across the road then.
It does. It does. And, and they're deep enough that. Myself and my staff had a lot of concerns about how deep they're going to be and how high the groundwater is out there.
Yeah.
And the types of soils. So. I realize they have the best of intentions and, and I, and I, I, I wholeheartedly support that. And I hope everything goes exactly as they plan. Um, I just am being a little bit over cautious, perhaps, uh, trying to look out for the. The, the, the use of the road and the ability to function for the rest of the community as a whole.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. So where's the existing central Weaver? It's on the north side, right?
So it comes up forty one hundred and it turns to the east right there at that intersection and it's kind of. Almost center, right? Almost center of the intersection.
Almost center.
Yeah, right there by that church on the corner.
A little bit almost to the east side of the intersection.
Yeah.
Fairly.
So you probably already thought of this. Wouldn't it be cheaper for them and us if they abandoned, I mean, you know, you can keep the existing manholes in place. Run a new line down, I would say, the north side of nine hundred south. And then you didn't have to put in a couple more manholes for future. I mean, have they looked at that option?
I saw that they did. Um, well, there, I, I should say their designers would have evaluated that, Commissioner, during the line process. And this way does eliminate a couple manholes.
Alright.
It is a bit of a road hog option, uh, but.
Okay.
Being that it will kind of serve the area in a sewer function for the good of the whole.
No.
I was willing to kind of come to the table a little bit on that, if that makes any sense.
Okay, I thought I'd ask.
And it's, it's a great question because they initially did look at that. And one of the other concerns with that, Gary, was uh Taylor West Weaver's water line, remember?
That's right. They've got their tank over there just west of the school.
It just really wouldn't fit because the line is so big that they're putting in it, the, the right away just wasn't gonna accommodate all, everybody's infrastructure. And that was the other reason they are doing the southeast.
Yeah.
So.
They've got their tank and that's one of their major feeds into their system that comes off that tank.
Okay, so one thing if I might to just plan for the future.
Uh-huh.
Is, you know, Weber Basin, we just approved the thirty percent design for the new. Wastewater, well, it's not wastewater, it's culinary water plant.
Sure.
Off of twelfth street and there'll be another line that's gonna have to be run.
Yeah.
Down that.
Yep.
Um, so we probably gotta think about, okay, does, where we put that in the future. Without interfering with that road.
Yeah.
And you can work with UDOT and Weber Basin, but.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's gonna be a waste down the road, but it's a half a billion dollars. Any money we can save, we gotta save.
Absolutely.
Anyway.
Boom. Great, great comment.
That's coming down the road.
Yep, appreciate that.
Or coming down the highway.
Yeah. We're going through the middle.
I don't.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's, we're good.
We were a little hard on them. Um, that probably goes without being said, that was a lot of stipulations, that's not normal for us. But again, this is not your normal sewer installation and.
No, it's big. It's a big regional project. Um, we're gonna get this into the portal and get this before you, they'd like to do the, they'd like to start in that section um by the school. Uh, during the break.
Oh, sure.
So to minimize some of the traffic.
Good idea.
So we're gonna try to get this in front of you guys pretty quick.
Okay.
Awesome. Alright, thank you.
Appreciate everyone.
Appreciate it. And thank you, Gary and Portland and your team. I know it's. It's been fast and furious.
It's gonna work. Wow, we were just flying today.
We are flying.
Oh, wow.
Two minutes ahead of time. Our next, our next item is a discussion regarding Weaver County Planning Staff Driven Western Weaver General Plan Amendment to Include Water Conservation Elements. Quoted by State Law seventeen dash twenty seven dash four zero three. We have Charlie here.
There's Charlie.
And Sean. So we have a few others coming in.
Sounds like there's a couple about outside right now.
Well, we've got all sorts of people coming by.
I owe all those guys.
I've been looking all over for that.
Hey.
Well, sorry about that.
Okay, we have Felix Severino who's joined us and Rick Grover and Liam Kio. So we are ready to begin. Felix, you're first.
Okay, thank you.
Presenting to us.
Yes, I mean, I could bring up some slides too, but um I think, I think I'll probably just give a quick rundown and we want to slide, look at the slides if we can. Um, I do have a couple of handouts for you. And so these are actually pages from the Western Weaver General Plan. These are the, the specific pages that will be affected by the amendment that, that we worked through as staff. So what we did is we, we actually helped to organize a water conservation stakeholder committee back. At the starting of, of two thousand twenty five. So through the summer, we had that stakeholder committee. We had monthly meetings, we got together for an hour once a month. And we kind of hashed out some details and got comments from uh water providers. You know, we had Central Weaver Sewer, we had, well, we had um. Uh, the Weber Basin there, we had Taylor West Weaver Water. We had some of the irrigation companies out there, some representatives to give us some feedback as to ways that we could. Um, write in these amendments into our general plan. And so there's also some, some information we had from the Utah Division of Water Resources. They were actually able to give us something in writing back that they thought ways that we could um in, make some improvements upon our general plan. So we took that information um through the stakeholder committee and through all these, you know, different stakeholders. And what we've come up with is some of the amendments that we'd like to, to make. And so in that, in an email I sent over to Christie Bingham, it does have the document that we had before the planning commission. So we recently, a couple of weeks ago, we had a public hearing with Western Weaver Planning Commission. And we presented, in that public hearing, we presented the amendments, the proposed language. And they forwarded unanimous positive recommendation to the county commissioners to make those amendments. Um, and so that, that's, that's really the gist of it. And one other thing I'd like probably should touch on is, is what, what kind of really spurred on this, this required amendment was. The state code changed. Uh, the state code that really passes down requirements for all cities and counties. That each city and county has to have a general plan. In that general plan, there are certain elements that are required to be in a general plan. And so they, what they did is they made some updates to the water element. And so that's what we're doing. We're making the updates that are required by state. And we're making those amendments to that way we can bring our general plan into conformity with what the state wants to see. And so I think, I think that pretty well covers it. Did I miss anything? Okay.
That's it. Um, in the stakeholder committee, we didn't have great representation from the canal companies. Um, but everyone else we did. Uh, Weber Basin Water especially. And they had some good input on water wise um landscaping and encouraging that in our code. We do have some elements right now in our code that address that. But this would further um encourage us to revise our ordinances to give more incentives for water wise um landscaping. Because a lot of the water that is lost is in the landscaping. And so whatever we can do to help reduce that uh so that it's uh used in other areas, like filling the Great Salt Lake, for instance, so. But that's uh what the plan um is heavily focused on is encouraging some of those elements. But unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of representation from the canal company. We reached out to them, but they just uh weren't responsive.
That's true. It's kind of important because we're under the leading things when it comes to water conservation is figuring out ways to be more conservative with. Those water sources, um, open canals, uh, you get a lot of vibration coming out of open canals. Uh, flood irrigated farms, uh, that there's some challenges obviously with that and with some conservation stuff. In, in an ideal world, we have all the money in the world that we can go and help those um canal companies pressurize their systems and all the farmers retrofit their farms. So that um there's more conservative means of, of irrigating. Um, but until we have that ideal world, we've got to figure out other ways to do it. So one of the measures in there is to work with the canal companies to figure out how to get funding to, to deal with it. The more development that comes in, the more you're gonna have farmers potentially pulling their water out of the canal company and flipping it for development purposes. Um, there's a certain point of water reduction where you're not gonna have enough in the canal to actually push the water far enough. And so those canal companies are gonna really be very possessive um of, of whether or not those rights can actually leave their, their system. So just to balancing acts that we've got to figure out as, as time goes on. And maybe it's not the county that figures it all out, but maybe we're operate as a hub to connect people.
Thank you.
We're gonna reach out now. We are gonna reach out and have some more meetings with those entities and hopefully with the canal companies on participating more.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want this to just be a one and done type thing. So.
Great. No, nothing from me, Madam Chair.
Yes, you've had Weaver based input, so it appears.
Yeah.
So I mean, obviously, you guys know. In this, in this district, we've got ten thousand acre feet left to allocate, which is not a lot of water. With the new happy billion dollar project with reuse water, we think that will pay dividends for Western Weaver County in the future. But it won't be too long before secondary water is no longer required by Weber Basin. I just want to make sure that, that, and again, we're not, the county shouldn't be in the water business, just like we shouldn't be in the sewer business. And maybe we shouldn't be in the garbage business, just.
Just the shot.
Just, just as a, just as a thought. So I just want to make sure nothing in here obligates the county to be in control of water, especially, you know, let the state and Weber Basin deal with that. And if we can, we, if we can encourage wise use of water, it's gonna help us out. Because you'll have water in ten, fifteen, maybe twenty years.
And that was discussed, that was brought up in the meeting of having just one.
Yeah.
System and not having multiple ones.
Well, it's, it, I mean, the numbers are hard to disagree with. By the time you put in two systems, the water comes to the same place, the waters cost the same. There's not much, especially now with what we're doing in Western, you know, with the new plant. There's gonna be no difference between culinary and secondary cost.
So true.
So.
Yep.
Now that's gonna be hard for a lot of those people out in Western Weaver County, the, the canal companies and the irrigation companies. You know, they just, that's, that's never how they operate. That's just not what they do, but.
Yep.
Facts of life. So I'm, it's coming down the pipe.
Love it.
Yep.
Love it. So Felix, just a little note for you, um your meetings, out of your meetings came um some, some really good, great discussions between LMSA and West Warren Water. And um they're gonna be talking in January about uh consolidating um because LMSA can do water as well, and we're looking at doing an interlocal agreement with West Warren to take on that whole uh Inland Port Project area. And they would be the sole water provider out there. So that, that was a, a really positive result that came out of, out of that, of those sessions is that dialogue got opened and
Yeah.
and going back to what Gage is saying, you know, we want this one ring to rule them all concept. We don't need everybody competing when there's easy solutions.
Then, alright, thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. And you'll, you'll see this on an agenda coming up. We'll be here. I just need to get a few things organized.
And.
Have a great one, you guys.
Awesome. Thank you.
Already. Yes.
That's good.
Right, Commissioners, we have a few minutes, so uh we'll be back.
We just need to.
Regarding appeal and variance hearing officer Charlie, the Grover Shawn Wilkinson, Thomas Chris Profit is not here. He's out of the country. Charlie.
Hello Commissioners. We uh we've got an opportunity right now. So with the um changes up in the valley, uh we've got to essentially release our uh BOA and um uh appoint some new BOA members because there are a number of people on the BOA who live in the city. Um but we have an opportunity to shift over to a a variance, uh an appealed hearing officer rather than appointing a BOA Board of Adjustment or Board of Appeals. A lot of communities have done it. It's administratively a lot more slick. You don't have to um postpone meetings if you don't have a quorum. Um sometimes if our our BOA uh meets infrequently, uh they're not as programmed and scheduled in and it's hard to get a quorum. Uh but it is a little bit more expensive to go to a hearing officer. Our BOA members, they work for free and uh a hearing officer does not. Um and so we just wanted to come and scope your interest in uh whether or not you'd like to go to it. It's a single person hearing officer. Um if we did it, I've got some recommendations from um Craig Call, who is a hearing officer from a few different areas. You guys know who Craig is. Um and he's given us some pointers. We need to change our ordinance um and then we'll need to put out a a either a RF fee or um a bid uh to solicit uh for people to put in uh for that project or for that um excuse me, that job. And he's also recommending that we have at least two that we put on contracts so that we can alternate through them or if one's not available or has a conflict of interest, we could get up to the other. So just wanted to scope out your guys' interest in that. Um the current fee for uh appeal is six hundred dollars. For a variance, it's, I'm sorry, for appeals five hundred, for a variance of six hundred dollars. Um that's our current cost. Uh or excuse me, that's what we currently charge. I would recommend for an appeal, we stick where we are at five hundred, but for a variance, we'd probably bump that up to um a thousand dollars uh if if we needed to to cover the additional expense. Uh and the only reason I say that variance, if if we made a bad decision, uh probably shouldn't cost too much trying to improve from that. Uh or excuse me, an appeal, but a variance, on the other hand, that's somebody will be trying to get an additional land rights, I guess, so maybe a little expensive.
If we, if we're going to increase our fees for it, then I'm supportive of that. It's what we, when I was in West Haven, we switched. And it's just a lot more efficient because of the lack of frequency that the GOA meets.
Yeah, very good point. According to Craig Call, there's not issues with Open Public Meetings Act because it's not a public body. It operates more like a a judicial body than a public body. So we could set up meetings whenever we wanted to and then as opposed to waiting for specific schedule times. So.
And I don't think we're going to have as many uh BOA requests because a lot of them, when I went back and looked at them, are up in the Ogden Valley. Yeah. So we do have a few up in Powder Mountain, um occasionally in the older area, but um yep, but most of the time we don't have that many out west. So I'm not sure how much we would be using this hearing officer um anyway. And when you think about staff resources and time, getting things prepared, that, you know, cuts back on things.
We may see more out with in in the west, but again, if we raise our fees to cover that cost, what are your thoughts on it?
Yeah, it's a convenience if it, i- it's a lot of money, but on the flip side too, if it ends up working out for them, they save money in time. So I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's way to, I think it's a better service. No better qualified. Craig Call will do it. It's a slam dunk.
Is he gonna do it?
Well, he has to put in for it, so we'll have to go out for public advertising.
You can't get, boy, he's the best in the state.
Yeah, keep doing it. I, oh, it's amazing. Yeah.
I looked at what some of his rates are for some of the, for some of the other cities and that he's patents for in comparison to what
And he's fair. You can't get a fair guy.
Yep, great guy.
And then you don't have to worry about, you know, getting six members that haven't been to a meeting in three months.
Be training.
Retraining, the training.
That's the big
You don't have to train him.
Yeah, right.
Exactly.
Guarantee it.
Or anyone else who might get the job.
Yeah, no, I fully support that.
And we'll have to run pretty quick so we don't overlap and not have an appeal authority. Um you guys have probably seen uh proposed ordinance changes on one of the next couple of meetings.
So would we have to open it up even before that?
We
So Charlie? I'm guessing in a way to project what a year looks like, right? As far as, is there any data that shows us on average what we're spending for this?
Uh currently versus what we will spend?
Yeah.
Uh we could probably dig that up.
Because if we dig that up and you've got someone that's highly recommended, may, there may be something that we can do without setting it up competitive, but I it'd be nice to know what that, that projection looks like. Even if that gets us through the first year and then we decide, oh, sorry, we overshot or we undershot or whatever. But then you also had mentioned that someone had suggested that there were two people in place and then you could go back and forth. So you you have a small pool. And if we're staying within the procurement thresholds for each of those individuals, so they're not combined at that point in time. They're they're separate, right? Then we're okay that way as well.
That's what you're probably
So, so if there's any additional information that we can get like somewhat quickly, we might be able to avoid putting this out.
Okay, some of the time, that's great.
So especially where you've got people that are very confident with individuals that can do what the county needs them to do right now. So.
Okay, we'll get something to you guys pretty quick and
Okay.
Let you know how it goes.
Okay. Warren, did you have to give me an ad? Nope. Okay.
I do. I like it.
Well, you were inspired, Cortland, so.
I'm associated with your name for real sense spirit, in spirit.
Thank you, Cortland. I'm glad you approved.
Charlie. I'd like to see something put on social media regarding that, Cortland. Motion to leave the closed meeting, go back to our work session. Second.